Stop lamps, turn signals, tail lamps, reflectors, parking brakes, rearview mirrors, windshield, seat belts, and a VIN number. Also, with Texas, they require a golf cart license plate and a VHS license to drive. They have to be fully insured, just like a vehicle. I talked to Savannah earlier about this and done some research. This thing covers one for electric bicycles, off-road vehicles, roadblocks. And I'd like y'all to look at it good and see if I can cover all of them possibly. I've got some stuff printed out. Depending on the second house, city, border, or waving the Lawrence, cleaning the brush up, that's my job. These motivate me fucker, and things might sign up. It looks really good. I appreciate you hardworking it in. That's not it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not gonna say long, but I just want to say something from my heart. I want to thank y'all for doing the job you did. There's been a lot of discussion on Biden and Obama. But I'm out on the street and I hear what people say to come into my store and everything. A lot of them are praying for new businesses to come into town. How many of y'all are working for that? And I appreciate that. So keep doing the good job you're doing. Keep asking questions, please, at the end. And please work with your EDCs, let them go. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm another fellow president of our EDC. I went to the TMZN seminar this month in Abilene, the ones that train us at our EDC. We do our training there. I spoke with, you know, a lot of people there. One gentleman, his name is Tom Parker, he's an executive director for Oldme, district. He's just currently working on infrastructure like we are and, you know, trying to find ways to fund one of these projects. And he currently is using TIRS. And I give everybody information on it, just to kind of brush up. And I'm gonna go to a training on the 21st to learn more about it. And, let me see, right over here. The first page is up on the screen here. And what a TIRS is, is a chapter of 311, when a municipality or county creates a tax increment reinvestment zone, and it records all the taxable value of the property within the zone. The year the TIRS is created, the base is the base year, and their appraisal value of the property within the zone during the base year is the base value. As the development or redevelopment occurs, the appraisal value of the property in the zone should increase. The difference between the increased appraisal value of the property in the zone and the base value is captured as the appraised value. And taxing levied and collected on the base value remains with the participating tax units. The portions of the taxes calculated on the capital appraisal value or tax increment is deposited into a tax increment fund. The revenues from this tip can only be used for improvement projects in the TIRS area zone. And the duration of the TIRS is set when it's great. And this is kind of just an overview. It gives an example, but I'll be going to training and then learning more about it so that way we can find different ways to fund our infrastructure projects. I'm looking forward to working with you on this project and others.
Well, that's my mom. I'm with the willow park, but this is not, has nothing to do with me. The park, the city park looks beautiful, nice and mild and weedy. Community looking swimming pool. That looks terrible. There's nothing's been weedy, nothing's been taken care of. And I know it's not open, but we're working really hard to get that pool open. And it needs to be taken care of. If you're gonna take care of the park and go all the way up to the fence, front side, all the way to the fence on the backside of the swimming pool, why not go in and weed the weeds? And, you know, there's eight of us that usually go to our meetings. At least five to seven of us would gladly donate our time and do it if we can. I mean, it's important to our history and to look, to have it look that sad. When the main park area is so pretty. It just, it needs to be taken care of, just like that park. But it, you know, I know it's a lot of time, but like I said, there's eight that usually go to our little meeting. And we'll grab our weed eaters and everything else. And if y'all need us to do it, we're glad. We'll just ask, we don't want anybody from the other, you know, nobody to support our group, we'll be glad to go in and take it. If y'all, if y'all would like us to, call our office and we'll do it. But right now, it's a snatch. And we got the Roy Ranger right coming through, and it should be nice if that was cleaned up before that. That's all I need.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Agenda item number three. Announcements from city council or staff comments made by council or staff, but no action taken on the following comments without specific notice. Those items include expressions of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information on holiday schedules, recognition of public officials, employees, or citizens other than employees or officials whose status may be affected by the council's action, reminders of community events or announcements involving imminent threat to the public health and safety of the people of the municipality.
Mayor, I have several. August 19th is our monthly bullet pick-up. It hasn't been placed on the list, so you can call City Hall or email. August 24th, this day of champions, that's also the city free collection station day with an active utility bill. And I would also like to add that I was successful in receiving a grant for a free tire trailer that day. So I'm going to qualify that, I found out today. So there's gonna be a free tire trailer at the collection station as well as sanitation is free that day. And then I would like to offer a big thank you to Sergeant Gibson and Officer Douglas. There was an elderly couple that had a flat tire last week, and they stopped in and helped them change that and send them on their way. And they wrote a very kind letter and said that they went above and beyond, they wanted them to be recognized to the full effect. So they're always doing things like that, and it's really nice to hear that from the public.
I watched them change all police cars out here, and I appreciate them doing that. Been worried about the maintenance of vehicles, they do a great job.
For all vehicles, not just their own.
Yeah.
What else?
I would like to congratulate the mayor and her husband on 50 years of marriage. Congratulations.
You still got five days, plus next Saturday.
I'd like to thank Luke Martinez for his years of service. He had his anniversary last week, and it's 30 years?
30 years.
30 years. I appreciate everything he does. And that's, that's a real milestone, those 30 years.
I've been in contact with the Monroe group, the owners of the Golson Hotel, about the front of the building. They had had a contract, has contacted me, should be here next week to see what we can do with that. Also, I've been in contact with the railroad, talked to the bridge inspectors about the bridge in the Commerce. They have been here, they have put some measuring tools on there to see if it's moving. They are working on it. They told me to keep me in the loop on that, but right now, there's no, no other cracks or anything on that bridge. I said they have the measuring devices on there to see.
Page two. Discuss considered approval of the city council meeting minutes of the regular meeting on July 22nd, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item number five. Discuss considered presentation and approval of the annual audit prepared by Carolyn McLean, CPA, for the fiscal year end of 2023. Ms. McLean.
Yeah. First, I'd like to say thank you to the city of Ranger for allowing me to be an auditor. I like coming down here and auditing where people do a great job and are very easy to work with. On page one of the independent auditors report, it is just past the table of contents. The second, the second paragraph under opinion, the first paragraph under opinion, which is the second paragraph, says that, "In our opinion, the financial statements reported to above present fairly and homittive respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business activities each major firm, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Ranger." This is a unqualified report or a clean opinion. And on the next, on the very last page, there is another report. This report is on the internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. So the first part, internal control, we're looking for deficiencies or material weaknesses in the processes and the operations. So in, if you look in the second paragraph, or, I mean, paragraph, the very last sentence is, "Given these limitations," which, you know, we are, the, "During my audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be their material weaknesses. In prior years, this included GAAP accounting, and the city is making a lot of good effort in, in bringing their software over to a full basic level. On compliance and other matters, this is the very last page, well, maybe it's the next to last page, the last sentence of the next to last page. The results of our test disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards." So let's take a look at the statement of revenues and expenditures, that is on page 13, in governmental finance first. The total revenues were $1.7 million, so total expenses were $2.7 million. That's a large decrease, it's a $1 million loss. But a lot of that was because of the, the way that the cash is allocated, the one cash account is used to fund both general and enterprise funds. So there, so that, there is a transfer in of $900,000, but also a transfer out of $900,000 to the enterprise fund. This is kind of a balancing amount. And running it through the income statement rather than a balance sheet, which would be a due-to-do front, that closes it out at the end of the year and keeps the due-to-do fronts from accumulating. So this is a, this is what balances, it's a balancing engine. So your, your fund balances at the end of the year is 408,000 by 22. If you'll turn to the page 11 before that, you have short-term current assets of $1 million in the general fund and a fund balance of 409,000. On the enterprise funds, on page 16, there was a $2.5 million operating revenues and $2.4 million in operating expenses and a transfer of $900,000. So we have a beginning fund balance of $6 million and a ending fund balance of $5.8 Your cash on the, on the page in front of that, your cash, your current assets, assets are $1.2 million, and total assets are $8.5 million. Your fund balance is $5.8 million, and 1.1 million of it is unrestricted. 4.7 million of it is tied up in, in fixed assets less the debt that is associated with it. So you're, you're in good, good position. Costs are going up for cities all over the, I mean, every city that we audit, costs are going up. So we've seen a lot of decreases in operating expenses for the year. And, but, you know, there's been a lot of, in this, in this report, there's extra money from ARPA, the CLRF, the, I don't know what else to call them besides ARPA funds. They're the funds that are sent out to every city over a two-year period in different charges. So there's those funds that are, that showed themselves in. Do you have any questions?
On page 15, the unrestricted at 1.1, that does not include the economic development money, does it not?
Does not include.
Does it include, or the economic development funds or not, the 1.1 million that is unrestricted?
I don't believe it does.
Right. And can we go to page 17, please? So we'll just start right there at the top. It says cash received from customers is 2.2, but we have outflow of 400,000 and almost 1.8, which leaves a net cash of 72,000. Then we have interest paid on debt, $54,000 out, that's a negative 124 out on principal. Interest revenue is 13,000, so it's a net of a negative 164. Then the cash flows for investing activities, a negative 1.1 miscellaneous revenues of 370,000. And we scroll down, this is what I'm concerned with. Cash and equivalents beginning was 1.4. Right above that, net increase in cash and cash equivalents.
Decrease, yes.
Was that?
I'm sorry, yes.
To negative 850,000. So if we end at 600,000 and we do another repeat in this fiscal year of what happened, what is that gonna do to our 600,000?
It's gonna reduce.
It would be a negative number, would it not?
Yes. There was, you bought an ambulance this year, $307,000. I mean, that, the 1.1 million dollars that you think were capital assets includes quite a few capital assets, includes a $300,000 ambulance, includes a public works check. There was also, let's see what else is in there. CWG project for valve replacements and inclure pumps for the wastewater treatment, a mini excavator, and a trailer.
My point is that we cannot afford another year like 2023.
Exactly. But you won't receive the ARPA, yes, you're right.
We won't receive.
But even without the ARPA funds, you cannot afford another year like that.
The ambulance and the mini, and the truck and the trailer were off of a grant.
Yes.
And that's included in the 857?
The cash flow from the ARPA grant came in in two, in two pieces through, over two years.
And that doesn't include the 200-plus thousand, obviously, because that was not, after this, this was... So of that 615, we had already been awarded the 200-plus thousand for that building, so automatically rolling in.
She's only, she's only counting for cash flow that's going through the fiscal year, correct?
I understand, I'm just, well, it's ending, so I mean, this next year, the one we're in, that's actually about to end, ended at 615. And the 200-plus thousand we spent demolishing the building was already included in the 615, was it not? Because it had already been awarded.
I'm sorry.
We were awarded ARPA money that we spent on demolishing a building.
That was not included in these funds.
Yes, another separate, except for the cash flow.
So it will not be included in this 615?
It's gonna be in this, this.
In this case, this period of full year.
Even though it was awarded during this period, it wasn't accounted for as?
The way I understand the cash flow, correct?
So basically, we went from 1.4 to 600,000, and we gotta run a tire show.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve a single audit for 2023? I'll make that motion. Did you make a motion? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? Any discussion?
I'd like to postpone the approval until the next council meeting, where maybe I can meet with Carolyn and get some more questions answered. Y'all, last year postponed it. I shouldn't rate that suggestion for your motion, but.
I'll withdraw my motion.
No problem.
I'd like to create an affirmation report before we approve it.
And I can give a few, on the phone call or stuff like that, yeah.
I plan to be here Tuesday.
Tomorrow?
No.
No, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
I do have a question, actually. We're not meeting the deadline to getting our audits turned in by state law. Is this next one gonna be turned in by?
I hope to be caught up on, I hope to be catching, this is my year for catching up. Yes.
Okay.
That is a, that is a state law that really has no teeth, the one, through the state of Texas. Your, your debtors require it, your creditors require it, and they're the ones who put the pressure on to get the audit through now.
I understand, it's still a state law.
I, yes, I agree.
My motion will be to make, postpone the audit approval until the next council meeting.
I'll second it.
Do I have a first and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Agenda item number six. Discuss considered resolution number 2024-08-12-M. A resolution of the city council in the city of Ranger, Texas, to enter into an agreement with the state of Texas through the Texas Department of Transportation to the temporary closure of State Highway 101, Main Street, from Commerce Street to the Ranger Boulevard for Roy Ranger Day parade on September 21st, 2024, sponsored by the Ranger Historical Preservation Society. Is Ms. Larkerson here?
She is, she is not, it's a, I don't know, it's just an annual, they do this videos every year.
I'll make a motion to approve your request.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item seven. Discuss considered approving the use of hotel motel tax funds up to 12,000 for advertising and signage for the Roy Ranger Day, to Day of End.
Can I speak for itself? We're here, we're not coming here. Can you get a motion?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Well, do we have, I would like to know if we have votes for what the signage would be, or how the receipts will be turned in, what, what, I mean, 12,000 alive.
Two years ago, we did, it was just under 10, and that eliminated us because of advertising, you know, radio, it was on substance, especially. Now we can go to a wider area. That year recorded 4,000 people.
What's that?
That year recorded 4,000 people. And here's how, it's up to, you think 12,000, if we use it, it's gonna be red if we use it.
Which is, we don't leave it in. Forty-eight?
Forty-eight. I was gonna check, it's 42.
Just to be clear, we don't touch any of the money to bring the bills up, it's ABC radio.
No, no, I understand. I just wanna, I wanna make clear, I host the entire airshow, the whole thing for under 12,000. And so I just look at that as a big amount, as long as it's been responsibly, I understand, but.
It's up to you.
$71,142.71, and we have not had it expensed out of, and that's what it's there for.
No, I understand, just wanna make sure it's been responsibly. So advertising, the advertising and signage, and then the receipts will be brought in.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Is your motion up to 12,000?
Up to 12, with obviously the.
With receipts provided.
Receipts provided, and now it'd be detailed receipts.
Yeah. Here's how this works, it's ABC radio station, we're bringing it up, so we're gonna check, we never touch the time.
I mean, it'll reflect how many hours of exposure, how many advertisements.
We can, we can add all that in, sure.
I would, as detailed as you can make it, I appreciate. Yeah, my motion will be to approve up to 12,000 with detailed receipts brought in.
Second.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Charlie, second.
Okay, fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item number eight. Discuss considered this space and avenue with dishes repaired options are possible close for private fence construction. Commissioner Calvert.
Sorry, can, can you get my email on there and pull up the photos? I just received you, if you let me go. So I'm gonna make clear, I'm gonna abstain from this vote because it's next to property of, I'm a director that we own. So this is to be for the council's decision only, and I'm going to abstain. You'll see in the photo after we disclose what's going on here below this. This is, that's the one at Boulevard. The softball field is in this area here now that used to be divided out for houses. We had a, we're about to break ground on the first of three hangars on Ranger Airfield Foundation property. This is not the city's property, this is the Airfield Foundation. Before we break the ground on the hangars, we had a survey, and this 60-foot wide street has encroached almost to our property line. The issue is, is if anybody wants to go drive it, this road already acts as a ditch. We'll go down in the next photo, please. This is the center of the street. Our property line is right over here, and then the college property line is way over here, actually beyond, there's a telephone pole here. When I clear out these trees with a bulldozer and bring the fence elevation up to where it's supposed to be, right on the side of this road, this road that is already filled with potholes, and in bad shape, is gonna become your ditch even worse. So what I'm gonna volunteer, if y'all want to keep the road there, is I will regrade this, bring the road over to the center of the 60 feet, and I'll cut the ditch so it'll drain well, this runs a lot of water off of it, off of the hill, from Desmond Boulevard, all this water runs into the college. I don't wanna make this street worse for you guys or the college. Will we put the fence up, but it will, because this street has over the last 100 years slowly, pretty much run up to our property line. So, if y'all want me to reshape it, I'm not gonna fund any of the gravel or anything like that, but I'll get it to where it's ready for it. I also had the college out, Chuck LaMaster talked to Derek. He said propose both options, I can regrade it to where I want it, or where it's in the center, or y'all can close it with cooperation of the college. Chuck said he saw the college saying no need for it, it's in bad shape. Multiple accidents nearly happened at this intersection all the time. Daryl, being at the college, could probably vouch, I haven't even spoken about this, to be clear. I would encourage all to, Daryl's opinion on what to do with this, but it's in really bad shape up here, like I said, this acts as your ditch now, it's only gonna get worse. So I don't wanna make your street worse by running our fence line, but it will, and I'm just trying to give you guys a heads up and see which I like.
Right now, it rains, this street is completely covered with water. You jump that ditch, this kind of streaking, it'll ruin the street.
So, so if you close it, does it go half and half or something, or how does that work? What would happen is, is what standard is, all the property owners that bought it get half. And so this house, it's owned by some unknown LLC, would get half of that side, the college gets the other half, and the bordering Ranger Airfield Foundation, not to be confused with the Pankins Foundation, would get the other half. I have no interest either way, I don't care, if y'all wanna keep it, I'll keep it. I don't want this to be looked at as some kind of land grab, but I don't wanna make the street worse, and that is this street looks, it makes the airfield look bad. So I don't, I don't wanna make those streets worse, but I'm going to when I put in our fence. And I don't need my tearing it up, I can do the fence without touching it, but as Daryl says, even now, it acts as the ditch, so...
Is water in sewer lines too? Sewer, not here.
And that, like I said, this is roughly the center of the street now. Is, is Desmond right here? Desmond is over here. Up there, okay, okay. This is Odie Street you're looking at. Okay, you're on Odie Street with the airport to the right. Yeah. Okay, all right. And all these trees are coming out, they're on our property line. We're gonna put up a high fence, just like we did around the college. And this street has never been maintained. It's, it's, I mean, Daryl can vouch for it, it's...
The far end down here, the head comes out, that's not the top of it.
What do we lose if we close it? You get rid of the intersection issue, because there's no stop signs, and repeatedly people pulling out of the airfield, uh, college kids will come barreling down the street. The fence is gonna help, because we're gonna clear the trees, but we're gonna plant new trees, we're gonna get our green wall back. So, um, even though this is an access point for us off the interstate, us being the airfield, I'd much rather see maybe the airfield fund a partial grant, 90-10 thing with texted to your Desmond Oak pave, and everybody has to go all the way down Desmond Oak. It makes no difference to me, like I said, I'm abstaining. None of y'all knew I was bringing this, I've only talked to the college. And if y'all wanna table it for two weeks, that's fine. I just want you to know, I'm gonna, it's gonna become even worse ditch. Because I, I guess what I should make clear is, right now, um, the water runs off Desmond and across our lot, and I'm gonna reshape that where the water hasn't come across our lot now, because it'll be running water into the hangars. So you're about to see a huge influx of water coming out of the river, is my hope, unless the road is moved over.
At the end there, Desmond, in the space, if there's a whole bridge where the water should be running, it is, should not park up there, it's, it's horrible. He gets it where water is, it will, maybe it's water. When it rains now, water goes in that road to Pankins and the rest.
I have a question, just a question. Do you think it would be better to go in and part that access for better residence there, or just what?
That, that's the 10th Street College, that part, there's another one beside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, this road right here is for the college, it doesn't go into their area.
I got you.
And just so it doesn't look like something was rushed, my, I would encourage all to table it, and I'll put it on the next day so we can all drive it. Does that property, the LLC, does that access down Desmond also for just one industry?
The main, main, a little bit.
Yeah, that's right, so we're gonna run it in here, or right. Okay. I don't know, I think a lot come up with third ones.
These trees are actually in the city's property. And it's hard to tell three dimensionally without driving out there and looking at it, how, how much this ditch has to be cut down way over here, I mean, you're talking about a two, two-plus foot rise there. To move it over, so... Well, without the college having a problem, I, I think most should just shut it down. I mean, because you're gonna put up, you're gonna, you're gonna divert the water, you're gonna put a fence up there. It's not used. Yeah, and what we probably, if it is closed, and like I said, I would encourage all to table it two weeks. I don't want any rumors about this, but probably what we would look at doing is putting a ditch on our side now, basically what would be granted to the airfield side. I don't know where, I need to talk with the college and just land over there, we have to figure out where to put the ditch.
I'll say, let's, let's table it for two weeks, so he can finish up getting the tippers on that, and we can...
Well, mostly I wanted, I can go either way, I know which way I'm gonna do it if we, if y'all close it or if y'all keep it open, but I, I want the reason you table it is y'all can go look at it.
Yeah, we need, we need to figure out the drainage issue too, so let's just table it for two weeks, I'll make a motion to table it for two weeks, and we can do a little research.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, are we ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
I abstain.
Agenda item number nine, discuss, considered convenient executive session pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code and Section 1.05, Texas Professional Rules of Disciplinary Conduct, to consult with legal counsel regarding clause number CB 224684, Ranger Airfield Maintenance Foundation versus City of Ranger, and the 91st Judicial Court, Eastern County, Texas, and the Ranger Airfield Foundation Police Agreement, and Clause Number 24-067-DCCB-47030, Ranger Airfield Maintenance Foundation versus City of Ranger in the 91st Judicial District Court, Eastern County, Texas. We also, the, um, agenda 11, discuss, considered convenient executive session pursuant to section 551.087, Texas Government Code and Section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding Economic Incentives for Company that seeks to locate in the city. Item Agenda 13, discuss, considered convenient executive session pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code and Section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding enforcement of economic development and this non-disclosure agreements. And item Agenda item 15, discuss and consider convenient executive session pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code and Section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to consult with legal counsel about personnel investigations. We have one more. Agenda item 17, discuss, considered convenient executive session pursuant to section 551.074, Texas Government Code, to discuss and consider possible employment and duties of a personnel director. Tom, what's there, is, Eddie? Sir?
Yeah.
You wanna recuse yourself from a person?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Where you starting?
We'll go down there. Agenda item number 10?
Seven fifty-two.
Discuss, considered reconvenant open session to take actions determined appropriate in the City Council's discretion regarding Clause Number CB 2246534, Ranger Airfield Maintenance Foundation versus City of Ranger in the 91st Judicial District Court, Eastern County, Texas, and the Ranger Airfield Foundation Police Agreement, and Clause Number 24067-DCCB-47030, Ranger Airfield Maintenance Foundation versus City of Ranger in the 91st Judicial District Court, Eastern County, Texas.
I'll make a motion if we take no action on this this evening.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Abstain? I abstain.
Yes. Agenda item number 12, discuss, considered reconvenant open session and take actions determined appropriate regarding economic incentives for a company that seeks to locate in the city. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to take no action on the item, uh, or decline the proposal. Until further, information as requested is received.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item number 14, discuss, considered reconvenant open session to take actions determined appropriate regarding enforcement of economic development and non-disclosure agreements.
I'll make a motion to take no action.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item 16, discuss, considered reconvenant open session to take actions determined appropriate in the City Commission's discretion regarding personnel investigations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we receive a report that one investigation is completed, and hopefully we have the second completed by the next council meeting. I'll second that.
Motion, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item 18, discuss, considered reconvenant open session to take actions determined appropriate in the City Commission's discretion regarding employment and duties of a personnel director. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we postpone discussing hiring a personnel director until the next council meeting or the subsequent meeting after the final personnel investigation.
What motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item 18, discuss, considered consent options, the approval of monthly department reports. Savannah?
No, where'd they hit?
I have to be honest.
I need one more piece of paper.
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna keep going, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
There we go.
Yes, sir, beginning profit loss for the July of 2024 on an accrual basis, uh, page two, gross profit 320,621.34. Page 10, total expense 255,420.20 and leasing profit 65,201.33. Year-to-date 280,413.90. Are there any questions on that? The next page, expenses by vendor summary for July 24. Again, this is the accrual basis, so everything that we received was entered as 170,657.48. Monthly sales tax allocation for the month of July, total received 43,437.40. EDC AMV board received 2,714.82 each. Street repair received 5,429.63. City bond construction 10,000. Texas Water Development Board debt service AMV bonds 4,000. General fund received a deposit of 18,577.78. We were up for the month by 19% compared to last year, and we're up for the year by 28.62%. The next two pages are the account balances on the numbers of 8 and 8. Are there any questions regarding that? Bless you. Laboratory report, we had a beginning petty cash balance of 46.95. She ended with total petty cash of 59.20. She had a total of 189 visitors for the month of July.
You know, that's, says something for a library these days.
Same, it's very busy.
Yeah, that's, that's good, I'm glad, and we still have that resource available.
And I would like to add that she applied for a grant, I believe she's gonna do a write-up on it, but she did receive two new computers and a new printer, underneath that grant, to serve our community.
We're lucky to have her in that position.
Yes, ma'am.
You notice how few children are going? It's all adults. We're having only 10 children. Try to figure out how to encourage more kids to get out there.
I think you'll see more kids on school stories, a lot of them go up there to the theater or something, or projects.
Yeah.
And next is the municipal court report for the month of July. Substances by officers, 29, there were no code, were added, some patients written. Total collected 3,796.60. The city kept 1,939.60. We sent it to the state, 857. Jail case, jail credit cases were four. Two arrests warrants, six, and they were either community service or pay plan on the warrants. We did do, one submitted a defensive driving dismissal for one, and MBVA is still, we got text messages and letters for placement. And then the breakout is following the reports. Chief Fox is here to give the part of the report.
Our EMS report, uh, 2024 through the end of July. July, we had 103 total calls. Total calls for the year, EMS 537, IR 233, total was 770. The average is 110 calls per month. Last year at this time, our EMS calls was 390 calls. Our calls was 187, so the total was 587. That's an 82.4%. And we had, we've had an increase of 103 calls from last year to this year at this time. And we had, we've had an increase of 193 calls from last year to this year at this time.
Ranger Police Department has the activity report for July 2024. Total citations issued were 29, total arrest warrants were four, warnings issued 46. Uh, total dispatch call sheets 169. Two criminal cases filed bail, three filed email. And they had a total of 185 calls for service.
I remember catching the story of the man handling situation for us. I just appreciate his professionalism so much. He's a very, very good, very respectful young man, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And then the public courts report, total gallons purchased for the month of July was $162,279,000. That's a decrease from last year. Last year was $196,760,000. And I will say that, uh, we did not pay any, um, surcharge for the month. We did not do over our usage for this month, so we've done really well. Uh, do you have any other questions regarding public courts report?
Do I have a motion to accept these reports?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Agenda item 20, discuss, considered adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.